Thank you, Alwada. We will get going now. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call to order the City of Bowie regular city council meeting of Monday, November the third, 2025, in council chambers. It is now eight P. M. I would ask all who can to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can we confirm that we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening. In council chambers, we have council member Rogers, Mayor Proton Wolfley, council member Brady, and then via virtually, via teams, we have Mayor Adams and council member Endevo Munado.
Okay, well, thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to adopt proclamation P-15-25, observing Veterans Day, under the consent agenda, please.
That's good. Under general consent, council? Yes.
There's a second here.
I couldn't hear the second. There's a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, say in favor. Hearing no motion carries.
The second item was, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a brief discussion under new business to touch on economic development and so council direction for staff.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we have a brief discussion on economic development. Hearing no, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, say in favor. Hearing no, motion carries. We will now move on to citizen participation. Do we have any citizen participation, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mayor, we don't have anyone signed up this evening.
Okay, well, we will now move on to presentations. The first presentation will be from County Councilmember Ingrid Watson, presenting a proclamation to our city manager, Mr. Alfred Lot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would also like to acknowledge and share with you that I brought a friend along with me, Senator Al Watson, to present a citation from the Senate as well. Is that okay, sir?
Oh, yes, and welcome to both of you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lot, would you please come forward? It's always wonderful to come back to the city council as this is always going to be my home. And I just want to say to Al, you are a blessing to the city of Bowie and you have been during your tenure here as city manager. I was so proud and honored to serve on the council during the time and with you and appreciated everything that you did for myself and, of course, the residents of the city of Bowie. You're a wonderful leader and a good friend. And I want to share this special proclamation with you from the county council. So it's a proclamation where Alfred Davis Lot has exemplified a life of service through his military and public servant experiences. And whereas as a Tuskegee Institute graduate, Mr. Lot served the United States Army, HORA, for 22 years in the capacity of infantryman, aviator commander, and public affairs chief, and obtained the rank of lieutenant colonel. And whereas with a desire to fulfill other educational achievements, Mr. Lot is also a graduate of the Army Flight School and successfully completed the Department of Defense Public Affairs Officers Course as well as the General Staff Officers Course. And whereas Mr. Lot has earned a Master of Science degree in public administration from the University of Central Texas, a graduate certificate in public management from the George Washington University. And whereas as a public servant, Mr. Lot has devoted his vast skill set to enhancing community business aspects as the Assistant City Manager of the City of College Park, Maryland, Public Works Director of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, City Manager of the City of Albany, Georgia, and Director of the Impact Aid Program, Office of Elementary and Secondary Education, Department of Education. Mr. Lot served as the City Manager of Bowie since December 2016. And whereas Mr. Lot oversaw and financed more than 250 million capital projects through the city of Bowie's six-year capital improvements program. And major projects include White Marsh Park redesign and playground reconstruction, water and sewer system upgrades, including rehabilitation of aging infrastructure and expanded stormwater management compliance, street resurfacing and sidewalk accessibility program, improving mobility and ADA compliance across neighborhoods, fleet and facility electrification and adoption of green energy systems. He launched the Bowie Police Department expansion and modernization, emphasizing community policing, technology upgrades, canine integration, navigated the pandemic, period, without layoffs or service interruption, directed Federal Opera and CARES Act recovery funds toward community safety and infrastructure resilience, and maintained high service levels while implementing hybrid operations and enhanced public safety. Now therefore, be proclaimed that Councilmember Ingrid S. Watson and the Prince George's County Council are pleased to recognize the retirement of Alfred Davis Lot after nine years of service to the city of Bowie. Further, Mayor, Mr. Lot is lauded for his service to Prince George's County as a whole and honored for his military contributions and dedication to the communities he served throughout his illustrious career. Signed, Oliver Bowles, Council Chair and Ingrid Watson, Councilmember. Thank you very much.
Very well done. Senator, are you up now?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, Alfred, you're really going to be missed. You always pick up the phone. You always provide calm, patience, and guidance, you know, anytime I call with any question I ask about. And so, on behalf of the Senator of Maryland, the senatorial citation, be it hereby known to all that sincere congratulations are offered to Alfred D. Lot in recognition of your nine years of dedicated, visionary, and honorable service to the citizens of the city of Bowie. Your steadfast leadership, commitment to excellence in municipal management, and unwavering devotion to public service have strengthened the city's operations, enhanced the quality of life for residents, and upheld the highest standards of local government. Through your professionalism, integrity, and collaborative spirit, you have guided the city through periods of growth and transition with distinction. Your efforts have left an enduring legacy of innovation, fiscal responsibility, and community progress that will benefit generations to come. The people of Maryland through this citation express their deepest appreciation and best wishes for continued success, happiness, and fulfillment in the years to come. Presented this third day of November 2025 by my hand, Senator Rod Watson. Thank you, Al, for all your service.
Very well put, Senator. I would like to afford our city manager a moment if you would like to comment.
Thank you, Mayor. To the best city councilperson I've worked with in my 28 years of being a city manager and the most assertive and outspoken and best outstanding captain I know, Senator Watson, I am humbled and surprised. And I want you to know that I really appreciate the fact that you know what it takes to run a city and that that's all I want to do. I tell other people, you guys go up front, let us be in the back doing our thing. And that's what I try to teach our people. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Hearing no comments, we will now move on.
Hold on, hold on, Mayor. We're just going to do a picture real quick.
City Manager, if you don't mind, hold one of your arms up kind of empty and then I'll just Photoshop you in the picture later.
Okay, Mayor, we are ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this time, we would like to acknowledge the city of Bowie was recently recognized with two distinguished awards highlighting the city's continued leadership and accomplishments in sustainability. These awards were presented at the October Maryland Municipal League MML Conference held in McHenry, Maryland. The first one was a Sustainable Maryland Certified Award. The city of Bowie was recently as a Sustainable Maryland Certified Community at the silver level. This achievement reflects the city's continued dedication to advancing sustainability initiatives and best practices. Originally certified at the bronze level in 2013, Bowie has maintained its certification through each three-year recertification cycle, achieving the highest available silver letter level in 2022. This certification is valid through 2028 and highlights Bowie's ongoing leadership and environmental responsibility. The MML Municipal Achievement Award in Sustainability. In addition, the city received the MML Municipal Achievement Award in Sustainability for its innovative LED lighting project, which retrofitted five major city facilities with energy-efficient lighting systems at no cost to the city. This project has resulted in annual savings of more than 442,000 kilowatt hours of energy, 57,500 in operating costs, and a reduction of 314 metric tons of CO2 emissions. This initiative exemplifies Bowie's leadership in sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and innovation in public administration. These recognitions underscore the city's strong commitment to building a sustainable, energy-efficient, and environmentally responsible future for our residents and community. Councilmember Rogers accepted the award on behalf of the city during the MML conference. Councilmember Rogers, would you like to make a comment at this time?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor. It was my esteemed honor and privilege to stand before the group in Western Maryland in the Appalachian Mountains with very limited cable. And it was cold. But it was my pleasure and I was proud to be there. I'm just so sorry when I posted it on Facebook, people thought I was getting the award. But I just commend the city because we are stellar when it comes to environmental issues and conservation. And I sincerely appreciate everything that's being done to keep us in, you know, in good steed when it comes to the environment. Because as I've learned over the past couple of years, there's so many things that can be done. And thank goodness Bowie is in front doing them. So thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Councilwoman Rogers, for receiving that on all of our behalf. And we'll just take a moment and say, thank you again and congratulations to all of those in the city staff and the team who made this happen and as well as to the city council for continuing to support. Those things that make us the best place to live. At this time now.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the awards here to present and staff will come to the podium to share those with the council.
Okay, go right ahead. Again, leave a space for me to be photoshopped in.
Mayor, smile, you're on the camera too.
I don't think he heard you.
Okay, Mayor, we are ready to continue.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to city boards and committees. I do not see anything on the agenda. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Correct, Mayor.
We will now move to council announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing.
Please go right ahead, Counselor.
Just wanted to say and follow up to the really nice presentation tonight from Senator Watson and Councilmember Watson about our city manager, Mr. Lot, who is still going to be with us for a little bit before his final retirement. I just wanted to also extend a thank you to Mr. Lot. I believe I'm the only person still here who was there when we first hired Mr. Lot some 10 years ago. I remember at the time, we were losing David Deutsch, who had been city manager for about 22 years. And those were very hard shoes to fill. And when Mr. Lot first came on board, I think initially, we were looking for a transitional figure, someone who'd be here for a couple of years, you know, get the city kind of going in, you know, the direction that we agreed to at the time and then find someone else who would serve for a long period. And yet, Mr. Lot, of his own free will, stuck around much longer than we anticipated, a decade in his own right. And so much of what we love about our city and so many of the incredible projects and the good stewardship we've seen these last 10 years have been because of his leadership and because of the team that he recruited and trained and brought on board and led and molded. And so, we thank Mr. Lot for his service and we know the city is in a very good shape and will be in excellent hands with whoever we choose to succeed him. But that person will be inheriting a city that is in very, very, very good shape in large part thanks to Mr. Lot's good stewardship.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a council adult.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I look forward to receiving all your constituent complaints, Mr. Lot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Just one quick add to that, to everything that Councilman Steph said. But I also want to commend our city manager for sticking it out. I don't know anybody who would have had the good judgment or the poor judgment to stay after the first meeting where it was pretty much total anarchy here where we were talking about the development over at Marketplace. And folks were here with pitchforks and torches. And I remember I was sitting right about over in that third or fourth row back there and I was thinking to myself, I don't know that he's really going to stick around. This is not exactly the welcome you expect for your first day on the job. But we are very pleased that you did and it has bode well for the entire community. And we are very grateful for your service here and very much appreciate all the good works. And the sign of a good leader is the continuation after his departure in the form of all the quality people he has brought to the organization and the structure and indeed, kind of the culture for the city that's been well established and ingrained that will live on well past your last day on the job. So again, thank you very much. And it has been indeed a pleasure for me to work with you as well. So congratulations. And thank you very much to our councilwoman and our senator for being here this evening to extend their appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Brady.
Thank you, Al. Let me pile on, if you will, to use an interesting term to my colleague's praise of the city manager. I was here for much of the time that Mr. Deutsch was and he was a, I thought, was a very, very good and capable city manager. And in the two years I have served under with Mr. Lot, I've found that he raised the bar above that that Mr. Deutsch had raised. So he did a commendable job and I want to thank you for doing that. And I look forward to the next person in that seat raising the bar even higher, if that's possible. But I thank you for what you've done, your service, and wish you well in retirement. And we'll look forward to you being a longtime Bowie resident in retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Second item, I want to also thank and commend staff for the conduct of the Beachtree Stakeholders Meeting last week. They had a good turnout of residents. There was a good exchange between staff and the residents and some good ideas were floated. And I also want to thank the residents who attended. I think it was very beneficial. And I think it's going to help in moving forward because this issue has a potential to create some chaos, confusion, and maybe some havoc. But I think we started off in the right direction. And then, second, the last item, I want to remind particularly council but citizens that there is a stakeholders meeting next week, next Wednesday and Thursday here at City Hall by the Urban Land Institute. They are going to do an item with the city with regards to Bowie Town Center. So if you're interested in where we're heading with that, I think it'd be a good thing for people to participate. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Rogers.
There's no way I'm going to let these three sit up here and make comments and I'm not going to say anything. I'm going to have prepared remarks for our city manager because I want to make sure I'm clear and succinct on how I feel these two years have been working with city manager Lot. So I'll do mine later and it'll be extra special. I also want to remind people that Saturday, in honor of Veterans Day and our city manager is a vet, we have the 5K that starts over Bowie Town Center. And then also, I think it's on the 11th that there'll be a veteran ceremony over at Veterans Memorial Park. And I just want to remind folks that these things happen because, I mean, during these turbulent times, you know, our veterans are suffering as well. And so therefore, we need to keep them first and foremost in our minds as we celebrate what they've done to help maintain our democracy. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I would simply like to say, you didn't pay me enough to make any comments tonight. So I will be coming. But I think it's important that we all recognize and appreciate the job that you've done, city manager. And like my colleagues, a deep sense of gratitude, a deep sense of respect for what you've contributed and given to this city. And there's no way that Mayor Rogers can thank you enough. But I say thank you and thank you on behalf of not just myself, the council, but also for all the people who live in the beautiful city of Bowie and appreciate all the time and efforts you put in to help and keep us moving forward. So thank you so very much. Having said that, I don't believe there's any other announcements. Hearing none, I'll move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Colonel. The city manager. We will now move to the consent agenda. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Opposed, say in favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Don't treat any old business on the calendar. Is that correct, City Clerk?
Correct, Mayor.
And we do have one brief item that was placed on at the beginning of the meeting and that is on economic development. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I will turn it over. I guess you wanted to have that discussion. Please go right ahead, Councilman Brady.
Thank you. And I don't want to dwell on this too long or take too much time since we have a pressing item that we're going to be discussing in executive session. But we're kind of up on a two-year anniversary, the halfway mark of our term in this council. And we've still been talking about economic development for a while. So I think it's time that we start pressing this a little harder. And I have a proposal and I want to split it into three different parts. We need to come up with a good economic development policy for across the city. And I think the 2022 Report, Economic Development Strategy and Action Plan that the city received three years ago would be a good starting point to ask staff to start developing the parameters and the context, if you will, of an economic development policy. I know the city manager has talked to me and talked with others about, well, if we give staff four, five, six objectives and they can do that, well, I think, start with a discussion or a development of a policy and we can add those as we formalize the policy, if you will. The second would be to task staff with looking at the creation of the Economic Development Corporation and provide professional guidance to us on the pros and cons of this endeavor, who would be our partners, our stakeholders, and the best. who would be our partners, our stakeholders, and the beneficiaries, and identify what other municipalities have done this, and any insight that's been gleaned from their effort. And then the last item I would suggest, and as a prop I have, thanks to staff, this is an old master plan for Bowie Town Center that was done by Levitt back 40 years ago, 50 years ago. So we have had a few documents that deal with Bowie Town Center. But more importantly, we've had an excellent assessment evaluation by our Economic Development Committee that provided us with recommendations on a new vision, the revisioning of that. I would suggest that we task our planning department to come back to us with recommendations on how we can create a new master plan for the Bowie Town Center and identifying any impediments that stand in our way of achieving that vision through county zoning codes or the state laws or anything. So it'd just be three tasks to, tasks that, three tasks for staff to come back to us so we can formulate the policy rather than continuing talking and pushing it down the road. So I would just ask consensus for assigning this to staff, so we can bring it back in three to six months, if not sooner. That's, that's the brief, 25 words or less proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Someone is speaking. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just second that thought. I think it's a good idea to get things, get some, get some traction on some of these items and get a little progress. And I think it would be good to have staff take, take lead on that and, you know, get input along the way as we're, as they reach certain points that they may have questions, certainly to reach out to us, and so that we can be a part of it as necessary.
Yeah. And I think in that conversation, City Manager, could you have staff take a look at starting to put together a framework, how we could move further during this, and, and give us some feedback on that, please?
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I think I got the mission. There's, we want to come up with a draft policy that the council...
Yes.
...endorse. One, we'll take a look at the pros and cons of developing Bowie's own economic development corporation, correct?
Yes, correct.
That might take an outside source, but, and the master plan for the Bowie Town Center, that also might take an outside source, but I haven't talked to Rich Holmes or other people on that one. But I mean, a consultant or somebody would help write it. But I got that.
We'll get that framework. Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you for letting me add this to the agenda.
No problem. We're at a point now that I will entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn to closed session under the statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions, Article 3-305B3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto, Section 3-305B7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice in Sections 3-305B14, before a contract is awarded or bids are open, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? During then, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. May's have the same favor. During then, motion carries. Thank you everyone, and please have a safe day.